Okay, it looks like we have the entire council present, but we'll do a roll call just to make sure.
Councilman Leonard.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Papezcu.
Here.
Mayor Pretempery Duper.
Present.
And Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like we do have a quorum. Please stand with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for your leadership of our communities and ourselves, right? Please help us as leaders of this community to make good decisions for our people or our community at large. Yes, that you bless us all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any comments from the public on any non-agendized items? I've received two requests, but therefore agendized items only. Okay, hearing none, and we'll move to our consent calendar. We'll deal with conflict issues as they arise.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item seven with a question.
Okay, go ahead with your question.
Widen California street from Redlands Boulevard to south 400 feet. Will that straighten out the intersection at Redlands Boulevard and California Avenue?
Yes, sir. It will so the intersection on the south side of Redlands Boulevard will line up with the north side of Redlands, of California Street.
And do we anticipate that'll facilitate the flow because it's, there's quite a backup issue there currently?
Yes, sir. And the reason we only go 400 feet south is we, I tried to, we tried to purchase the property on the east side, which is that triangle piece all the way to Park Avenue, but the property owner asked for too much money for that. So, we just stopped and then make a transition into where we have the right of way and go north.
And when will the project begin and when is it scheduled to end?
My goal, the good news is I received the permit from US Army Corps of Engineers in Fisher game. That's very difficult to, to get the permit. My goal is to go out to bid in December. If you approve the agreement tonight, I'm hoping that the city of Redlands will take it to their city council, and then the county will approve the agreement, and I will go out to bid.
So it requires approval of both Redlands and Loma Linda?
Yes, sir. This is a three-way agreement where all we ask them is give us a no-fee permit, and let us work on their right of way and their, in their right of way.
And, and the cost of this is, how, how is that going to be handled?
The, back when we used to have RDA, we did set some bond, and then when the RDA went away, we moved that money aside for, for this project, and that was, has been, this project had been set for use this funding all along.
So this will be funded entirely by the city of Loma Linda?
Yes, sir.
Even though it's on the Redlands boundary?
Yes, sir. Well, part of it is in the, part is in Loma Linda, part in Redlands, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I understand, but, but there's not going to be an equal divide?
No, sir.
And that's because?
Because to them is not, not their priority.
Even though the mission school, which is right there on that corner, is not a priority for them?
Is, is Redlands School District.
Yeah.
To them is, right now, they would explain to me intersection of Redlands and Alabama, and interchange I-10 Alabama has more priority than this one, so.
So they don't have money to put into it, in other words?
Yes, sir. And it have been tried, sir, I really.
No, I, I believe that.
And, and so, and also as part on the agenda, you, you see that, you notice SB one, which is the new gas tax that the city need to submit the list of street improvement to the state by this Friday. And so, I include California in there just in case we can use that money, and also include the Anderson from Barton to Lawton. So we probably use that money for it.
I just want to note, it's disappointing that our rich neighbors to the east don't put any money into this kind of renovation when they would benefit equally to us.
I think there may be some opportunities to get them to help bring money when we redo California, since that is part of their city as well.
Right.
But I'm talking about the interchange California, and I should add, actually California is all in their city, but I'm talking about Mountain View. There's a portion of Mountain View that does fall in city of Redlands. So when, when it comes time for funding that, we can put a little more pressure for them. I'd rather have them subsidize interchange on a freeway.
The Mountain View interchange?
Yeah, the corner there is Redlands.
The northeast corner of that interchange is Redlands.
And that's not going to be a cheap one. That's going to cost about $50 million, so we'll put some pressure on them then.
Okay.
And, and we need to put pressure on RCTC, I mean SBCTA.
Sabuca.
Because, because they still think that 70% of the traffic is come south to Loma Linda, so therefore we're responsible for 70% of local mass, and I disagree, so.
I just wanted on the record that Loma Linda's paying for that entire intersection at this point, because, I mean, we need to do it. It's in desperate need of updating. But it's disappointing we don't have a, a partner in this. You don't have to say anything.
So is that for, it for item seven?
That's it for item seven, and with that I would move the consent calendar.
And I have a quick question, item number nine.
Okay.
We're appropriating $8,300, it looks like for handheld radar units, is that what this is?
Yes, sir. The current radar unit that we have is, is, let's see, it was 1999. And we just need to upgrade.
We provide those units to?
The county sheriff, yes, sir.
Okay. I, I noticed that comes out of a fund called Special Project.
Yes, because this item is not budget for, for, for.
So that could be special project for, well, so it's special projects for anything, not just this?
Correct.
What is the fund balance of that, do you know?
We just get the money from this, recently backed from the state, that's why I'm using it.
No, no, I'm just curious.
Currently, with the loan repayments, we're sitting at about close to $3 million.
In the special projects?
In special projects.
And are we not using some of that towards this intersection, or that's separate?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What I can't figure out on item number nine is how we can spend as much money as we do on police service from the county, and it doesn't include radar? It just, it just reminds me of hotels. When you go to Motel Six, you pay $6 or whatever the current rate is, and it's, everything's included. And you go to a $700 hotel, they nickel and dime you on everything. You're, you're the $700 hotel, but it's very nice. We like it. You're expensive, but you're worth it.
And just for my edification, what is a LiDAR unit?
LiDAR.
LiDAR? Can you pull the mic in front of you, please? Thank you. I've got a feeling I'm going to hear from citizens wondering why we want to support this, but.
It's, he, he has LiDAR and radar now.
Yeah.
And he's using that equipment. That equipment should be able, replacing parts with wrecked cars that we find that have similar stuff, and taking parts out of them will create things like calibration and stuff like that. It's getting difficult. I brought him as the expert for LiDAR and radar.
Okay.
Basically, it's like having a flip phone or the iPhone. Flip phone kind of works. iPhone's been lying to more things. It's going to let you, if you're in court talking about it, maybe to be able to better explain what's going on. You're not going to have to worry about the age of the technology interfering with the speed or convenience.
Have we had any issues with people questioning the, the equipment? You, no?
Basically, the equipment's falling apart. The rear radar right now doesn't read cars coming in until it's lying on top of the vehicle. And does, does LiDAR, he's got to sit real close to the, to the street to use it when it's down.
Yeah, and LiDAR uses a laser, whereas radar uses radio wave. They're all Doppler, but ones with a laser, the others with radar, radio waves.
So what, what, and this, I don't know if this is a question you can answer or not, but how many of the traffic tickets that we write are relative to this technology? Are we usually picking people up on a speed radar, basically, or? Is speed radar the primary vehicle that we're using to write traffic tickets?
For, for speed, yes. The only other, the only other way you can do it would be to pace a vehicle. The city's kind of small, and that will modelize and things.
Yeah.
But the stats I have here are 389 speeding, speeding tickets, and because of that, we've only had 23 traffic collisions that are related to speed, that have speed as the primary cause.
Mm-hmm.
So 389 per year, for a full year, is what that is?
This is from January 1, 17 to 10/6.
Oh, okay.
And I guess the point of my question is, as a citizen of this little community, and driving around for the last 40-plus years, I don't see very many speeders. And I'm sure some people will, you know, take it over two or three miles an hour or something, but I'm trying to understand, are we scratching where we have no itch in the community?
So they actually race by my house at probably 85, 90 miles an hour, and that's my expertise as a traffic cop for a long time, estimating the speed, which he's also required to you to do. Using radar and LiDAR, you can't rely on that as your sole purpose or your sole evidence. You have to rely on your estimation, your, your, your experience. So he's not out there just willy-nilly writing people tickets for no reason. I would call and complain, but, I, you know, ultimately I think we're getting a cul-de-sac at some point, right? So, you know, but seriously, there are a lot of speeders in this community. I see them all the time, so.
And the difference, again, between LiDAR and radar, I'm not quite sure I understood that.
Laser, radio, radio waves. It's the frequency.
Okay, and LiDAR is the higher-end technology?
Yeah.
You could, you could. Yeah. Okay. Can you tell us offhand how many fatalities we had last year, the calendar year?
Off the top of my head, sir, I can't say how many we had last year, but I, off the top of my head, I think we had three.
Yeah, it was like three or four. But we just really brought back the traffic program this year, and how many fatalities have we had this year? Zero. Thanks.
Complaints for speed, we do have, we do have call complaints. I'll move the traffic officer around. Bring me out different shifts, different times to address those problems. Probably one that you heard of, the man who's last name is Steve, lives up off Beaumont. And there's a very long straightaway. People are going pretty fast. A lot of citizens, people are walking and jogging.
Can you pull the mic in, in front of you again, please?
One of, one of the things that Jarvan and I have been discussing in the city council, or the city staff meetings, is actually putting a sign up on Beaumont that shows how fast you're going and what the speed limit should be, just to try to slow people down up there because they are going so fast.
That makes sense, yeah.
What's your opinion on Beaumont? Because there was, there was a guy eight years ago who complained that the speed limit was too low, based on the 85 percentile measurement. And we agree that it's too low based on that, but we're invoking special circumstances because of the heavy pedestrian traffic and lack of sidewalks. What's your opinion on that?
How fast is anything?
It's, Beaumont Avenue is 35 miles an hour, and I think that's inappropriate speed, especially with the pedestrian traffic I see. You have a lot of elderly, you have a lot of people walking their dogs. And a lot of the residents not only are from Loma Linda, but they also come from Redlands, and they're going to Birkley Creek's Park because they want to go on the hiking trail. So it's quite a bit in the morning, and that's why helping enforce speeding out there helps a lot with the residents. We have a lot of residents that actually like our presence up there because we're also close to the school. And it's also prevented a couple of burglaries that's happened in that area as well, because people see that we're enforcing traffic in that area.
So I think it's, I think it's appropriate speed.
Yeah, so you agree with the special circumstance and that 85th percentile is inappropriate for that particular road?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I just, I have a, I have learned over recent years to have a skepticism of technology just because it's available, that in my view, there's got to be a purpose and a need for it before we implement it, or we can spend buco dollars just continuing to track technology and all these things. So I mean, obviously, I'm not interested in supporting speeders, and if Councilman Duper has 85 miles per hour, I live in a cul-de-sac, so I haven't seen anything like that, but.
They actually race up and down my street. I mean, I hear them street racing. And I'm in a unique position because we come and go from, from the backside, from the alleyway. So we're not necessarily out or parked out there, but whenever we walk up and down the street, man, I've always got an eye out for what's coming up and down, because I'm afraid somebody's going to leave the roadway and take my family out.
Because there's multiple stop signs on that.
They'll, they'll blow those stop signs. They will line up and race, and it's, I'm telling you, you can hear it, you can hear it at night. It's crazy, so.
So if you track it in front of Duper's house, and not so much on Lawton, because that's where I get nervous.
We'll make a note.
Okay. Move the consent calendar.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? I hear none, so the consent calendar is approved unanimously. Next is item number 11. Request for letter of support for proposed sphere of influence amendment.
This, this item, we have requests from Mr. David Saunders.
We have two requests. The first one is from Randy Levin.
Okay.
And then David Saunders.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Thank you for putting us on the agenda today, and you're probably wondering, what is this all about? We thought it'd be a good idea for me to start before Dave Saunders goes and talks to you about what we're proposing for this council today. My name is Randy Levin. I'm the CEO of an entity called University Realty, and we are an affiliate of Arizona State University in Tempe, Arizona. Just quickly, I'd like to maybe chat a little bit about what ASU is, and then you'll understand kind of what we're, what we're doing here. And by the way, I noticed that there's a civics class here today taking notes, and so I love to see that education is thriving here in Loma Linda at an early age. In fact, one of them is about to go to college, so maybe I can talk her into going to ASU. ASU is the largest public university in the United States. We have 100,000 students. And we're happy to say that we have a very unique mission in our university. We demonstrate leadership and academic excellence and accessibility. And what does that mean? We are measuring our student body population not by whom we exclude, but more by whom we include in our university. It's easy for a major university, an Ivy League university, not to say they're bad, to talk about, well, we only allow 1% of our applicants in. We look at, how can we include people into our university who may not have had that kind of opportunity before? How can we go into other communities where there aren't other options for an education? And so, I want to say that, that of our student body population, 49%, almost 50%, are students of color and students who have never, their parents never went to college. So this is, they're, they're the first generation. So that, that makes us very unique. What also makes us unique is that some of these students here, 12% of our student body population, 12,000 students, come from California. A thousand of them come right from the inland, inland empire area. And you wonder, why? Why is that happening? It's because you can have an A average in high school, and you could be having an A average in a community school, and you cannot get into the UC school program here. It's very difficult. And so, we have kind of capitalized on that as ASU for what we're, what we're doing here. We've had a 35% growth in the state of California as far as students coming here. And so one might think, okay, well, if you're all about inclusion, and you're bringing in people who maybe never had that option before, what does that mean to your statistics? And, you know, we're all measured by something, where you're, by your, your successes. And I want to say that for the third year in a row, we've been ranked number one as the most innovative university in the country, beating out MIT and Stanford. We're the top 10 school for the Fulbright scholarships. We join only three other schools, Harvard, Stanford, and University of Chicago, as the only institutions to produce Rhodes, Marshall, and Churchill scholarships. This is because we're inclusive. And we, the majority of our students enjoy reduced tuition, both. So the average tuition, let's say, might be $10,000 for an in-state student. Our average student's paying 2,000. For California, and we know what the tuitions are like here, our average students there are paying a fraction to go to ASU than what they'd be paying here, and yet they're getting a very high-quality education. We're, we're an option for smaller communities to be able to educate their, their, their youth. We've, you know, we look at Loma Linda University, which is a wonderful institution here, but it has many programs that we don't have. ASU doesn't have a medical school. We don't have a dental school. But we're also the largest engineering school and largest liberal arts school. So a lot of times universities look at how they can work together and kind of, you know, help each other out, fill the voids. And so it's not unusual for us to, to be here, but some people ask, well, so how do you, how do you do this? I mean, how are you being so inclusive and, and offering these huge tuition scholarships to students like this? 11% of our funding comes from our state legislature. By law, our legislature's supposed to do 100% of our, of our funding, and they don't. So we have a very unique president of our university who said, "Don't complain, just go out and figure it out." And so we have done just that. The majority of our money that we get is coming from grants and private donations. We have really focused on that. And a lot of our private donations, some people are, are cash poor and real estate-rich. And so we have been able, over the last few decades, to entertain the idea with some of our donors about giving gifts of real estate to the university. And there's a lot of people like me who, for years, were real estate developers. And some of my team here has kind of heard the spiel, so they're probably going to be rolling their eyes. But I've been a capitalist my whole life. And I retired and got bored, and, and the president of the university called and said, "We could use your help. We're getting all these gifts of real estate. We don't know what to do with it." And it wasn't until we took one of these gifts and monetized it that I learned that 30 students got full scholarships for four years, based on my background as a developer. We built an apartment complex and sold it, and the monies went to fund these kids. And so I've turned from being a capitalist to being a philanthropist. So we get these gifts of real estate, and we have to figure out, how can we monetize it to build up these scholarships? That's why I'm here tonight. We have, one of our donors has a piece of property, had a piece of property, has and had a piece of property here in your wonderful town of Loma Linda, and gifted it to the university. And so, not really knowing anyone here, we did what universities do, which is what I just said. We, you reach out to other fellow universities, and you have discussions, and you kind of get the lay of the land and figure out what's, what, what's going on. So when we take in these gifts of real estate, our, our philosophy is twofold. One, as I said earlier, we want to monetize the gift for the largest possible amount for scholarships. That, that's really important. But secondly, we want to do, whatever we're doing, want to, we want to put a footprint in that local community. This isn't the first community that we've gone in and done things with. We've, there's scores of them. And so we look at what are the community needs and what are the community wants, and how can we have a lasting footprint in that community as we're growing ASU and, and our, our agenda and our mission about inclusion. And so this particular gift that we have, that we have received, we're looking at something that Dave Saunders, who's our representative, will explain involves a piece of land whereby a portion of it is in your Northern Hills area. And there's a desire by some of the citizens of this community to maintain that and have it that way, and not have it developed at all. And, and we, we understand that. We get that. But there are, you know, there are land rights that go with, with land, and so we're not ever trying to force anything down any community's throat. That's not our, not our position at all. But there is some land on the other side of the hills that no one sees from the city. And so a thought was, well, what if we put some of that land that's in the back, and, and we basically got that de-annexed, and then the land that's in the front that's viewable by the Loma Linda citizens, their hills, we would donate to Loma Linda South Hills Trust, I think that's what it's called, as a land conservation. So forever and a day, it would be forever preserved as is, with the trails and everything else. We also would, you know, many of our, in all of our situations, we, we'd like to make sure, as I said, that lasting footprint, that what we're doing here will have a lasting footprint, not only for the community from the standpoint of these hills, but maybe we can work some things out towards a scholarship footprint here for the 12th grader that's sitting over there, or, or those kinds of folks who are community college people who want that next, that next step. That's important to us. We've done this in other areas, and I just want to just, I'll finish up here by saying, there's, this is not new. In the state of California, we have something called the Golden State, Golden State Scholars Program. We have a Western Undergraduate Exchange Program that is with 14 other states that allows things, scholarships to occur. And we have a guarantee program for California students to qualify who are coming out of the community college program, because right now they don't have a place to go. They get through their two years, and then they're stuck. And so we're an alternative to that. So as Dave goes and talks to you about this, think of this not. think of this not as a developer who's here to make a whole lot of money because we, frankly, I don't put a nickel of it in my own pocket, nor does my company, we are serving Arizona State University in its mission. So I hope you'd consider us, and we're happy to address any questions after Dave gives his little talk.
Can I answer some questions now?
Oh, sure, absolutely, sir.
Awesome, great. So you said the property was gifted to ASU?
Yes, it was.
Already, all of it?
We have half the property that's on the North Hills, that would be from where the ridge line is, all the way down to where Loma Linda City was already gifted to us prior to December 31st for the tax year.
Okay. And it's solely gifted to your university?
It is solely gifted to our university.
Great. And what's the reason why it would need to be de-annexed from our city?
The property right now is, because it's on the other side of the hills, councilman, it cannot be serviced by the city of Loma Linda. There's, even though Loma Linda has a requirement, when that property was annexed to provide services, the geography alone just doesn't provide for it. The city of Colton does provide for it. They do have those services already there.
Have you already got a commitment from them on the project?
We have met with all their council members, their city manager, the city attorney, the last two, three weeks.
Okay.
And we will be meeting with, actually, they'll, we'll be meeting with their city council here in a few weeks. But we've met with all the council members.
Do any other schools benefit from this deal?
As far as schools, can it define what that?
Schools, any other institutions, anybody else benefit from this deal besides your school?
Well, we're hoping, councilman, that all the schools here will benefit, you know, with some of the ways.
But financially?
Financially, we're hoping that through scholarship programs, they will, yes.
Okay, so that's it. 100% of this money goes to ASU?
Right now, 100% of this money would go to ASU, but it's our desire that we're going to, that's why we brought Loma Linda University. And as I said, universities work together all the time.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the correlation.
Well, okay, one university, it's not unusual. For instance, I'm working on a project with the University of Hawaii, okay? On, we have some land there, we're trying to work out some programs. I got a call two days ago with King's College over in London. This is not unusual in the academia world. I'm sure, you know, I heard a little bit of law enforcement, that there's a little give and take, and they work, they kind of offset each other. Universities do much the same thing.
Is Loma Linda helping you broker this deal? I'm not exactly certain of their.
Well, they're not real estate agents, so they're not getting a brokerage fee. But we would hope that some of the proceeds that we get there, that we can put together programs that we'll utilize and help some of these students go to school.
Okay, so it is a partnership between you and the medical center or the university?
Well, they're not an applicant. We haven't, we don't have anything signed in paper. We don't have anything in writing.
But you've got discussions about it?
We've definitely had discussions, which is not unusual with, for any university to have with another university.
Okay, all right.
All right.
A quick question. The full piece of land, how many acres was it in the full acreage that?
Good question. So the north half, what I call the north half, is 227 acres. And then, the back half that you can't really see is 200 acres.
I want to be sure we get our geographic straight.
Okay.
You mentioned the North Hills, but you're pointing to the South Hills.
Oh, well, you know, that's because I'm from Tempe, Arizona, I'm sorry, yes.
So we're talking about South Hills. So when you say the northern part, you're actually meaning the furthest away from us, which would be the most southern part?
That is correct, councilman, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to.
This is why I have Dave here to be kind of keeping me on track here.
No, I just want to be sure.
I'm just an academic here, so.
I just want to get clarity on the full amount of land and how much of it is actually owned by University of Arizona.
Well, first of all, it's not University of Arizona. That's our, that's our.
Competition.
Yes. At ASU.
Arizona State.
We have 227 acres that we currently hold title to today.
And then, there's another portion that's owned by whom?
There is another portion of it, and I'm not going to attempt a direction. On the other side of the ridge line, that's 203 acres.
Okay, so it's a total of 400 and some acres?
Something like that. Sure.
Good evening, I'm David Saunders. I'm a land use attorney, and I'm going to have the IT person here put up the next screen so we can help identify exactly where we are. And I'm not so sure this is the best. Okay. This is the city of Loma Linda here. This is roughly the city of Colton. It's, the property in question, this first part, is 227 acres. Those 227 acres are currently owned by University Realty. They were donated the property as part of this overall project. This area is 210 acres. The city boundary between Colton and Loma Linda is here. And so, let me help you understand perhaps a bit of the background, both from a legal standpoint and by way of explanation. It's a total of 437 acres. It was originally owned by a single donor. His plan and his program is to benefit University Realty and Arizona State University and to benefit Loma Linda University to some extent, and I'll get to that in a second. But let me give you some background information. We're here tonight to ask for your consent to a Sphere of Influence Amendment. And what is a Sphere of Influence? A Sphere of Influence is a planning tool used by LAFCO. And what in the heck is LAFCO? And many of you may know and some of you may not. LAFCO is the Local Agency Formation Committee. It's a commission that's, a commission, Local Agency Formation Commission. And it is comprised of city and county members. And their purpose is to review and approve boundaries of districts and cities. And a Sphere of Influence is an area designed by LAFCO, in San Bernardino in this case, to indicate an area for probable future annexation of a city. In this case, the Sphere of Influence in Loma Linda is the same boundary of the city of Loma Linda. And the Sphere of Influence in this area is the city boundary of Colton as well. There's no overlap. Typically, you see Sphere of Influences when you have a city and outside of the city and the unincorporated county areas, those areas would be in the Sphere of Influence of that city. In this case, the Sphere of Influence for each city is that city boundary. So what we're asking for you is to take the initial step in what could be moving the 210 acres to the city of Colton. And could I see the next slide, please? So again, we're talking about this 210 acres. And the ridge line that Randy was talking about runs in this area here. So this area to the south of the ridge line is out of sight to the residences and so forth of the city of Loma Linda. So I'm going to describe what we're asking for a little bit like a first date. There's no commitment whatsoever to any sort of future relationship. We're just taking baby steps in a process that could result in this property in question coming to the city of Colton for future development. Until that annexation, that change of boundary is approved and completed, the property stays at all time in the city of Loma Linda, is under your control and authority. So what are the steps in the process that we're talking about? First, we hope that the council will see in its wisdom to approve this letter to LAFCO supporting the Sphere of Influence Amendment tonight. Next week, we have a similar presentation to the city of Colton, and we need their approval as well. We've met with LAFCO, and they've told us that they will not process this until they have a concurrence from both cities to this initial baby step. Then LAFCO holds a public hearing on the Sphere of Influence. You, your staff, affected residents will attend that hearing and be heard on whether the Sphere of Influence is appropriate. It is a prerequisite for a future annexation that the area in question be in the Sphere of Influence of the city that is proposing the annexation. So this property must be in Colton's sphere as the next step before any sort of annexation proceedings take place. So if the Sphere of Influence Amendment is approved by LAFCO, then LAFCO will entertain an application by University Realty for an annexation of the property. What happens in an annexation? First, the city of Colton must pre-zone the property for some sort of future use. And University Realty has some ideas for future residential development. The city of Colton has some ideas. The citizens will have ideas. And ultimately, that will result in what's called a pre-zone of this property into some sort of land use category for some sort of future development. Number two, a plan of services will be generated by Colton. Colton will say, how do we get water, sewer, police, fire protection, and so forth to this area? And third, a financial analysis is prepared. How is this area going to support the financial burden on the city of Colton of providing these services? And so, LAFCO reviews the financial issues as well. Finally, as your council knows full well, you do what's called SEQA analysis, analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, which discusses the various impacts and environmental effects of a project and seeks to mitigate or reduce those. So it's quite an extensive process in which LAFCO then holds a public hearing on the annexation. And again, you and your public and your citizens and the city of Colton and their citizens will participate fully in this public hearing process. And so, the important question for you tonight is, well, why should we go anywhere with this proposal? What's in it for the city of Loma Linda? Let me explain what we believe are the benefits of the project. First of all, in this baby step tonight, you're not committing to an eventual annexation of the property whatsoever. LAFCO will hold a hearing on the Sphere of Influence Amendment. LAFCO will hold a hearing on the annexation if we go forward. And as the affected city, I believe your voice has the strongest weight of LAFCO of any entity before it. They're not interested in taking property away from cities without the city's consent. So your opinion will carry tremendous weight with LAFCO, I assure you. Second, if the annexation was to go forward, you obtain relief from your obligation to provide city services. When this property came to the city a number of years ago, you assured the property at that time that you would be able to provide public services to this property. Since then, of course, your citizens have adopted Measure V, and Measure V restricts tremendously your ability to build infrastructure in the Loma Linda Hills. So as a practical matter, it is very difficult, if not impossible, for you to provide future public services to this property. And therefore, it makes sense that another agency would provide this, and you would be relieved of that obligation. Third, because of the geographical isolation of this property, any future residential development will have very limited impact on your residents. They will not see or be affected by this development whatsoever. The property transportation corridors, the streets and highways, will not take access into the city of Loma Linda. They will go the other way to Wetcha Canyon. There will be no physical access of roadways or facilities into the city of Loma Linda from this project. And so, that's an important issue to keep in mind. Finally, or next step, not finally, I've got three more points. The next issue is, if this property develops for a high-end residential as we anticipate, that provides excellent housing for future residents of the area. And many of those residents will become employees in your city and support the businesses in your city without corresponding obligation to provide them with public services because they're in another jurisdiction. And now, let's talk about the 227 acres. The property on this map, which is right in this area here. University of Realty now controls that property. And if a project is approved in Colton, and ultimately, a development is approved and sold to a builder, the intent of University Realty, as Mr. Levin pointed out, is to provide perpetual dedication of this property to open space. And we leave it up to the city council at an appropriate time to make that determination of how that's formed. And other roads, does it come to the city? Is there some conservation agency? But the point here is that we want to guarantee the future of this property under perpetual control, that it would remain for open space, that it would not be developed, and that the community can have a permanent right, the Loma Linda community, to enjoy the various benefits of this open space. Finally, the next slide, please. You'll see, this is the 210-acre piece. This is the 227-acre piece. These lines indicate the existing trails that are now in the property that we're proposing would go into perpetual open space. We don't know what's going to happen here. We don't know what development is going to occur. As I told you, that's going to be in future discussions with Colton. But in the conceptual designs, and the developers call bubble diagrams, we've left these various interface areas open so that these trails can extend, as they currently do, into the 210-acre piece for development. In other words, we've maintained these access points for these trails. So if some development was to go in, the citizens of Loma Linda who have this as perpetual open space can continue on with their hikes further to the south and so forth into the developed areas of the property. And as we indicated, there is, there have been some discussions with the Loma Linda University in which Loma Linda University would potentially reap some financial benefit in the event this property was developed and sold to a builder in the city of Colton. There is no financial commitment. There's no agreement. There's no understanding. All that we've indicated is this donor who's donated the property has an affinity to Arizona State University and has made significant donations in the past. We're told that one of his friends had a wonderful experience in the proton beam treatment at Loma Linda University Medical Center, and he's asked University Realty to direct a portion of that contribution, that charitable contribution, to Loma Linda University for their various programs. But there is no obligation. All we've indicated to them is that this project has the potential, if the stars align, to create some monetary donation to the University of Medical Center. And so, we're asking for you to send a letter to LAFCO to start the process. None of us knows where the process will end up, but the requested letter is a no-obligation method for you and your residents to look at the options and to indicate what you and they prefer to have happen with this property. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. In an email from you to me dated July 25th, you stated that Loma Linda University would receive a third of those funds. They'd be donated to Loma Linda University should that deal happen, correct?
That's the amount that has been discussed. Two-thirds would be retained by Arizona State University, and one-third would go to Loma Linda University. That's absolutely correct.
So that's the, that's the formula and partnership which I was trying to ask earlier.
But, please, there is no partnership. There is no quid pro quo. All that we've been told at the, from the University Realty side is that the donor has requested that they make this donation, and we wish to follow his wishes because that's the reason he makes the donation.
Okay, fair enough.
But there's been no legal partnership or any sort of quid pro quo of any sort of formal understanding with her.
My next question is, have you guys considered the option of putting together a ballot measure for the citizens of Loma Linda to vote on this issue?
No, we haven't.
And I bring that up because you mentioned Measure V, which precludes any building in any of that area up there. So in the north or the south part, on both sets of acreage there that you state, you can't build either way because Measure V is a pretty perclusive measure. And that was voted on by the citizens of Loma Linda. Have we thought about bringing this item forward to the citizens of Loma Linda and let them decide on whether or not a development should happen? Or we should de-annex an area? Because it almost seems like we're trying to move area out of Loma Linda. Because it almost seems like we're trying to move area out of Loma Linda into another city to subvert the law in Loma Linda. Am I missing something?
No, I think that you're misconstruing the situation. And whether or not this is an appropriate decision for the city council ultimately on the city of Loma Linda, that's your role, frankly. That's why, that's why you have your position is to make that determination. We, of course...
Well, to be honest with you, I wasn't, I mean, I think the citizens voted for Measure V and I would just as soon see the citizens contemplate an issue like this. We're talking about changing the South Hills and that's specifically what they want to protect it. We have a couple of representatives here that were big supporters of Measure V and they could probably elaborate and explain the will and maybe I'm missing it.
You are. I can explain. Well, there's a long history to this piece of land. I met with the prior landowner for dozens of hours about this in 2005. And at the time, we were proposing Measure V and that land was part of that process. And the landlord was trying to negotiate with us in keeping it out of Measure V because what Measure V, the purpose of Measure V was twofold. There's lots of other factors, but as it relates to the hills, it was twofold. Ensuring that the hills would not be massively developed and homes could be built there but on much larger lots. And if my memory serves me correctly, I think you can build there, but the lots are somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 10, one to five to 10 acres. The bigger issue for Measure V was we did not want any connection between Ritchie Canyon and Santa Mateo Canyon to go into Loma Linda. We didn't want to draw all that traffic that we knew was being used by many people from Reno Valley and Riverside to come through Loma Linda on the way to the VA Medical Center or whatever. So our concern was that if we put any sort of roads there, it would try to create a further issue. We were willing to take that land out of Measure V as long as it never connected to Loma Linda. The owner said no. And I believe the reason the owner said no was because he was at the time pretty much in the same group of folks who were trying to develop other parts of Loma Linda. And so they had to show a united front. So we were willing to allow them to put whatever they wanted to put over there as long as a road did not hit Loma Linda. He did not agree to that. So therefore, we put the whole piece of land in Measure V.
And that was a different owner at that time?
Correct. That was Mr. Hansberger. So that was the premise behind that land. We didn't have a problem with what he did over there. In fact, at the time, he was proposing like 200 houses. We said, you can do that, just don't connect it to Loma Linda. And he said, no, I need the whole thing and I need to be able to connect to Loma Linda. So we never agreed and therefore it was put in. So that's the premise behind that piece of property.
Any other questions for me, council?
Go ahead.
Could we get from the city attorney a clarification on the interpretation of the impact of Measure V on the property we're discussing? Because I hear that Measure V may apply or it may not apply.
Well, my understanding is that...
And if it applies, in what way?
The property is subject to Measure V and it is, as Council Papesco indicated. I'm sorry, I'm still having a problem talking, but...
But, so just to be sure, I understand. That means that it can, the 200 acres on the south side of the map that we're looking at can be developed, but according to Measure V, it would have to be on large lot sizes.
I believe that's the case. 10-acre minimums.
10-acre minimums? Okay. So by annexing this to Colton, they would no longer be under the regulation of Measure V and it would be up to the city of Colton to decide how that could or could not be...
Correct.
Okay. And so if I'm understanding this, then the north side of this lot is basically to say, okay, Loma Linda, you can keep, you know, this for trails and hiking and preserved area if you let, if you disassociate with the south half of the property so that it can be developed however Colton regulates it.
Well, that was the concept that was just approached here, but there's no commitment at this point that I'm aware of that would bind the property owner or University Realty to actually convey the northern open space area to Loma Linda or any conservation entity.
So what we have here would not bind the donor to commit the north half of this land to Loma Linda?
At this point, my understanding is they have not made any specific commitment to do so.
Mr. Attorney, do you have any insight you can add to that?
Yes. At the appropriate time in the project's review, it would be appropriate, I believe, for the city of Loma Linda to ask for a commitment and to get a commitment. It's premature for us to make a commitment on a property that is still in your city and is not subject to future development at a density that we're looking at. In other words, this is a process. It's going to take some time. And in appropriate time in the process, it may be perfectly appropriate for the city of Loma Linda to say, folks, now we're getting to the point where possibly we're edging toward a possible annexation. We would insist that you make firm your commitment to do what you've represented to us, and that is make this land, permanent land use restriction on the 227 acres. But it's a process and we want to kind of start that, but you're in control ultimately as we go down the road.
No, and I understand that. And I guess as a councilman who's not an attorney, I want to be sure that we follow the process to protect the rights and what's in the best interest of our city. And so I don't want to sign off on a letter or annexation or anything else until I feel confident that if we decided this was an appropriate arrangement for us, because I respect the fact that there's a property owner who wants to benefit the university or Arizona State University. I completely understand and am sympathetic to that. But I want to be sure that we respect the will of the citizens of Loma Linda and not get ahead of ourselves in terms of what we agreed to either. And I don't understand the process fully.
And your point is very well taken and we understand and agree with your approach. The issue is, at this stage, we're simply going, asking Lafco to open the door to an application. And...
But we're... We're just one second. But writing a letter saying we support it is basically tantamount to, we want this to happen. So it is asking us to make a decision.
On the Sphere of Influence Amendment only, okay? Not on the annexation. We don't say anything about an annexation to Lafco in this letter or...
What would be the harm in putting together a ballot measure where we could present something to the citizens of this community to decide if that's what they would like to do?
Well, that's up for the council and the citizens to determine. They're free to do that. But we think it makes as much sense for the council to simply say, let us make an initial attempt to see if there is support with Colton, with Lafco, and with yourselves on ultimately some sort of a project.
So I've spoken to several Colton city council members and officials at the city and I've heard they have no desire because they're so congested with traffic coming through Ritchie Canyon that they don't want any part of this, is what I've been told. That's just to me. I don't know what they're telling you. But, hold on, let me finish. And where I'm at here is that, to me, it's really important what the voters of this community want. So I'm in a position where I don't believe I should be making a decision changing something as important as Measure V was, regardless of what the original intent of the people who crafted it. But we had, our citizens came out and voted on it and we have a result. And so we've had a lot of other, a lot of things that have come up in the last couple of years that have been non-starters because of Measure V, because of the, because of the way now things are. And I would be remiss to say that I have any more power and authority to say something that maybe the rest of the voters here would like to weigh in on. And I don't think it's, I mean, it sounds like a reasonable idea and a reasonable project, but I would rather have the citizens vote on that. To me, it feels like we're trying to subvert something here and I don't like that feeling.
Well, and I respect and understand your position. Our position is not to subvert anything. We've been absolutely straightforward with you and with Colton and everyone else. We've explained to you what we'd like to do. We've explained to you the benefits to the city. So please don't suggest that we've somehow playing fast and loose or trying to do an end run around your regulations. We see this as an opportunity to create a number of benefits for your community and for the region, and that's why we're here.
Another question I have, just out of curiosity, since we're the givers and so it's easy for us to give it away, Colton would be the takers. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to get that letter from Colton to begin with or get, show a support from your entire council or figure out your...
The bottom line is, we're going nowhere unless we get the support initially to the Sphere of Influence Amendment from both Loma Linda and Colton. And we're meeting with Colton next week. And so I hesitate to get into real project-specific issues about what improvements could be made of Ritchie Canyon to improve the circulation. We're confident we're going to be able to do that if we come forward to the city of Colton. We are, we've had very in-depth discussions with city staff about various concepts about a project and we see perhaps stronger support than you. And we'll find out next week how well we've read the tea leaves. But we had to come to one of the cities first and you're first up there next week. And ultimately, we think that this is something that you ought to grapple with. And how you grapple with it depends on your viewpoint and so forth. We think that we made the case for an initial foray, initial attempt. We are not, this is not a fait accompli. This is not just going through the motions on something that's already done by any means. It's simply a request to look at the issue and see what's in the best interest of the community.
Councilman Duper makes a good point there. I was just thinking that Measure V is almost to Loma Linda might be what Proposition 13 is to California. And I am a little nervous about something like that. Now, a question just procedurally, could a vote be given for this sphere of influence to explore it, but at any point we could say, we want to put this before the voters? Or by doing that, does it preclude such a thing?
Yeah, my understanding of the procedure is that this preliminary letter would start a process, but it does not commit the outcome of the process. The environmental review and the public hearing and everything else down the road and the actual de-annexation and annexation, that's a lengthy process and the city could certainly indicate an intention to obtain voter approval along the course of those proceedings, if that's the desire. That's not before you this evening for action on the agenda, but you could certainly bring that back and take that step if you so desire. The environmental review process also gives an opportunity to perhaps interject conditions on the project that would include dedication of open space to mitigate the impact of any development further south. So there would be opportunities to Loma Linda to be involved with the process, to have a say in the process and to ultimately consent or object down the road.
So if I'm understanding, to put it in layman's terms for my benefit, we would get some guaranteed open land to sustain trails and so forth for what the South Hills have traditionally been used for. And if there's a development, the trails would still have access to it, but it would all be processed and all of the traffic and sustaining that development would all fall on the city of Colton via the roads that are already there.
That was what we heard today in the presentation, yes.
Okay.
And all of that, of course, is subject to future public hearings and approval processes.
Sure. So what is it that this letter does? What are we, what is it that we would be voting on tonight?
We're voting to change, that we support the change of our sphere of influence.
Yeah, no, I've read all of it, but I don't, I guess I still don't fully understand sphere of influence.
That's why I think it's a little premature because it's basically dedicating, regardless of what's said, not saying we're okay with changing the sphere of influence in furtherance of a deal like this, because there'd be no other reason to do that. So I'm just, however you guys decide, I'm not comfortable with that. I believe this is an issue that really we should figure, because you get together incredibly great people, like the citizens of Loma Linda.
Do you think the citizens of Loma Linda want to vote on a parcel of land like this?
I think...
I think, yeah, at some point, they voted us responsibility to be good caretakers of what we have.
What in the future would prevent us as good caretakers from doing this from any other parcel of land anywhere else in the city?
It's judgment.
So why...
That's why you have to have good city councilmen.
Good point.
We could vote the city of Loma Linda out of existence.
You could.
Wouldn't, probably wouldn't get reelected, but...
No, I understand your point. I understand your point. I'm just asking a question because at some point, the citizens of Loma Linda put the responsibility on us to make wise decisions that we believe are in the best interest of the city. Not that we take every decision we make back for the citizens to vote on it. Where do you draw the line?
So I guess where some of my concern is with this particular issue is that this has loosely veiled connections to a big nonprofit entity in our city. And I was talked to specifically because I was approached and said that they needed to talk to me because I was the only one not conflicted on the issue. So that leads me to believe there are some things going on behind the scenes that maybe aren't fully up there. So when those things happen, me with my conscience, I say, take that decision away from me and the four, the five of us total, and let's put it on the people. Because I believe, based on emails and things that I've been told, the medical center benefits from this deal. And it was in part helped, brought along by potentially some members of our council. And I think to protect all five of us, this is one of those things that is just a little dicey. I've had multiple discussions with our city attorney, with our city manager about it. I mean, I'll publicly show you everything that has been emailed. I just have concerns about that. So in my opinion, to make this very clean, we take it to the people.
Well, that brings up another topic, which is that we heard mentioned that there was a, an intent for one-third of the proceeds to go to Loma Linda University. Does that implicate the impartiality of the city council members who have connections to the university? So that's my question of the city attorney.
Well, as you know, from these discussions we've had in the past, conflict of interest rules are very complicated and ultimately it's a judgment call for each member of the council to make individually. However, because that item was brought up in the context of not an agreement or a commitment, but rather a potential down the road if a series of events occur, there is a potential that should be reviewed and weighed. Each of you could, in an abundance of caution, having heard that in the presentation, choose to declare a potential conflict of interest based upon income or employment with the university. And we could draw straws under the rule of necessity if the council believes that this is a matter that is important to go forward and that this is the only body that can take the action that's being requested. can take the action that's being requested on behalf of the city. There are, there, there is some case law regarding conflicts of interest that looks beyond simple written contracts to intentions and implications and, and substances rather than written words. And that concerns me. I don't, I don't believe that there's a strong case to be made at this point for a conflict situation because of the preliminary ethereal nature of, of the discussions that we've heard presented today. But, I'm a very cautious person, as you know, and in the past, we have chosen to declare a potential conflict of interest based upon those employments and, and income situations. And if, if you choose to do that, it's important to do that right away, because if there were ultimately to be found a conflict, participation at any stage of the process, even short of the final action, could be considered a conflict. So, I don't think I'm necessarily in a position to give a, a flat-out yes or no. Ultimately, as, as I've said, it's, it's a judgment call, but some of the details that have been brought forward in the discussion are certainly enough to trigger second thoughts as to whether or not there's a potential for a conflict, whether or not there's a perception that could be out there of an influence on this decision, albeit a, a very preliminary sort of opening the door to further proceedings and discussions down the road.
So let me see if I can take the legalese that you just shared and see if I understand it. Because Loma Linda University stands to potentially benefit from this proposal, and there are four members of the city council that are potentially conflicted with their interest in LLU, that it would be better to do what?
Well, the option is to invoke the rule of necessity--
Right.
And draw straws.
Right. And then two of us have nothing to do with the decision, and it proceeds, and the other, the other three members, including Councilman Duper, would take this through the process accordingly.
Correct.
To what we believe is in the best interest of the city.
Correct.
And what about Councilman Duper's proposal that we put this as a ballot measure before the citizens? Is that, is that extreme? Is that reasonable? Is it what?
That's a very legitimate option to consider. It would be related to the other action, and so if we were to draw straws, perhaps that decision would be the best left to those three.
Part of my concern is, is how interested and motivated the citizens of Loma Linda would be in understanding just what's going on here. And, and I, I, that's an honest question, I, I can't speculate on that. And you can't either, no.
It's not a legal question.
Okay. Okay, well, at least it helps me understand. So, the, the action that we need to take then would be to decide whether or not we're going to consider it tonight, and if we do, then we, we, we draw straws and, and we identify three people. If we're not ready to take action tonight, then, then what's the next step?
Well, procedurally, the item before you is a, a private inquiry or request. You're not required to take any action, but you could continue it to another meeting and seek further public input. You could, you could indicate an intention not to support the request, or you could support it. So it's basically yes, no, or maybe some other time, are the options.
Because we've, we've, we've had a straightforward proposal that I think has been open and honest, and I appreciate the candor that the presenter shared with us, so I feel like we need to do something. And, not a motion, but just to stimulate discussion, I'm, I would be in favor of drawing straws and letting three people decide just exactly how we should proceed on this, or if we should proceed. Because I think, you know, the donor and Arizona State University have done their due diligence, and they brought a legitimate proposal before us, and I, I don't want to just stonewall it, I think we ought to decide how we're going to proceed on it.
Well, then, as always, it is up to the individual council members to declare a potential conflict of interest on the basis that we've discussed, and if, if that's the desire of the council members individually, then we would go forward on that basis.
I'm just seeking discussion.
I guess to, again, to keep all of us out of the weeds and make it a little easier, my suggestion was we would, would be to ask the, the applicant to bring back a proposal for a ballot measure that maybe is all-inclusive and all-encompassing, and we do it all in one swoop. And then, the applicant has the ability, just like anybody else, to campaign for support, not support, whatever gets in front of the voters. And I love my colleague, Dr. Daley, but I do think the voters here are conscientious voters. They know what's going on, they are prepared, they're attentive, they will sound off their voice, and if, if it's, I'm actually not opposed to this development at all, but I did not author Measure V. It came in before I did, and it is the law in this city. And I respect that, and I have personal challenge with what I see, and, and maybe that's not the intent on your end, but I would, I would choose to go in a direction so there's no perception of any type of impropriety there. Does that make sense? I'm, I'm looking for the cleanest possible way. If the voters enacted Measure V, it was not something we did. We, we've put together lots of ordinances in the last eight years between us, and that's one thing, but this was a voter initiative, and it was a big deal at the time, and it was very controversial.
That's true.
And I just want to be very careful of that.
Well, why don't, why don't we just analyze it from a logical perspective? We've recently annexed new property into Loma Linda, right? The new development that's going on east of California Street. Did we ask the voters whether or not Measure V should apply to that?
When we come in, it has to be applied to--
Okay, so, we don't have to ask the voters to approve, to extend Measure V to a new property that we annex? And then by logical extension, do we have to ask the voters, understand the desire to make it clean and get everything out of the weeds? But we don't have to necessarily ask if, if a section of the city is no longer in the city, we don't have to necessarily ask the voters to say that we don't, the Measure V doesn't apply to that non-part of the city any longer, right? It's kind of a logical mirror image.
I get where you're going, but very few cities actually de-annex parts of their city. And obviously, this is an undeveloped, open space, but realistically, when you set that kind of a precedent, what could prevent us from taking, say, one of our more economically depressed areas and say, "You know, we no longer want that to be part of our city."
Well, we, we could take--
Let's unincorporate that.
We, we could take that kind of a, kind of a foolish move, but see, my, my feeling on this property is that whenever Lafco, whoever it was in 1970, who drew the boundaries of Loma Linda, whenever they did that, they got kind of lazy, and they just went, shh, they drew a line due south to the county line. And if you look at the prevailing land mass, everything kind of goes in a diagonal from northwest to southeast. All the hills go that way. And if you wanted to do it, if, if there were no arbitrary north and south on our maps, then it probably would have been drawn out there. It's, it's an amputated part of Loma Linda that has no access to the services of Loma Linda, and it's kind of arbitrarily in Loma Linda. It even goes down and grabs a little teeny short section of Ritchie Canyon Road, which makes no sense. Do we, do we have to pave that section of the road when it comes up? So we have to pay to pave that little corner of Loma Linda just because it happens to be on Ritchie Canyon Road, which is kind of absurd. So I've always looked at this thing, and I've always looked at Scotch Lane and said, "Those poor people in Scotch Lane, we can't do anything to help them." The only thing we've done is we've kind of connected our fire departments so that, yeah, they're maybe our same guys, or at least our battalion chief is going to go out and put out a fire on their property. So I've always seen the southwest part of the city as being kind of a, kind of an arbitrarily assigned area based on just a lazy cartographer who said, you know, "We're not going to follow any actual geographic features, we're just going to go due south to the county line." So I've never seen this part, and I've, and I've done a little bit of my homework, because, you know, representatives, and I've gone around and asked a bunch of people, including the major proponents of Measure V, "What do you guys think of the southwest corner of Loma Linda? Do you care?" And the answer I get is, "Not really, it's, it's over the hill, it's not a place where anybody from Loma Linda typically will hike." So I was doing my job as a representative to find out. You know, I went to the people who are the most excited about the hills, the people who put in place all of these initiatives over the years, and I couldn't detect any excitement about that southwest corner. And this includes, I asked the same people the same question back when Mr. Hansberger, this is Dennis Hansberger's father, owned the property. And interestingly enough, my position on the city council is because of this land, I don't know if you realize that. The former mayor, Karen Guyoh Hansberger, was, was being roasted over, you know, an open spit over the, over the, the fact that her father-in-law owned this land in the southwest corner, and she ended up, for whatever reason, resigning her seat, which eventually I filled. So I'm currently in the, in the Karen Guyoh Hansberger seat on the city council, if you, if you go with continuity. So, I asked, because Mr. Hansberger did a presentation to me, and I went to the proponents of Measure V, and I, I can't remember whether it was before or after Measure V passed, but I asked them, "Do you guys care about this property? Oh, no, we don't care about that, it's so far down in the southwest, and it's attached to Ritchie Canyon. Everybody who goes up there are motorcyclists and, and hikers from, from Scotch Lane, they don't really, it's not the people from Hold a Crook's Park that hike all the way across there." So, I kind of did my homework on it, and I didn't detect much of an emotional connection to that corner of the city. So to me, I don't see that there's any need to have some kind of a big plebiscite, I don't personally think, because I've done my homework, and I don't believe that that corner has much value to the citizens of Loma Linda. Of course, a plebiscite would bring out all kinds of political factions, and you would have a lot of hay thrown around. I'm not sure that it would enlighten the situation, but I've already received to my satisfaction enough feedback to say that that corner is, is, is geographically, culturally Colton, not Loma Linda. Measure V very specifically says, "No streets shall be extended from Richardson, no streets shall be extended from Sierra Vista to Ritchie Canyon." So it is amputated by Measure V from the city of Loma Linda. So whether or not Measure V says that that is included in the property that has a 10-acre minimum, the purpose that I read in Measure V was, "Don't connect us to Ritchie Canyon Road," because we don't want the traffic. So when I look at this thing, I say, "We're actually honoring Measure V by amputating it and giving it away to Colton." That's the way I look at it.
Well, I want to bring up the, the idea of having the voters vote for it. And just, I, I'm not saying this because I'm trying to put any, you know, make myself feel like I know more than anyone else, but I was part of the original group of people who drafted Measure V. And when Measure V was put together, it was mostly for the hills, and it was mostly related to land close to Kathy's house. I told them, I said, "If you guys want Measure V to pass, you need to include the whole city," which opened up a whole can of worms, because now we had large developers like Lewis Homes, who said, "Over my dead body, we're going to let you put 7,200 square-foot homes, when we want to put 2,000 apartments in your land." It was a simple decision. We proposed it to them, to the council, and we said, "We believe this is what's in the best of interest of our city, because our city was founded on these principles of how we want land to be developed." We never had an issue with high-end homes or anything like that. So the city council had a choice to make. They, they could have easily adopted Measure V on, just on their own, but because they chose not to, we were forced to put it up for a vote. It wasn't that we were doing it because we weren't sure how the citizens was going to feel, we were doing it because we wanted to overturn what the council was doing, okay? So I think a decision about this land, we, we can make a decision and live with the consequences, or we can say, "We're not so sure, we're going to let the voters decide whether we should take this land out of Measure V." That's not really the debate here, although obviously, that would happen if the land gets taken out. But I, I think the bigger issue is how, as we move forward, and what's the impact that this decision would have on Loma Linda? And that's really the bottom line, as far as I'm looking at it. I'm not so sure about, I, I, I don't really care whether the University of Arizona owns it or who benefits from it. The question is, how does it, how, what's the impact does it have to Loma Linda? And to me, that's, that's the issue. And I, if, because of my background with this property and understanding how we felt about it, and we didn't have a problem with what they were doing there, we had a problem with the way it was connecting to Loma Linda, and I could still remember, we had lengthy conversations afterwards. Mr. Hansberger, I know he was protecting his own interests at the time, but he donated heavily, heavily to the anti-Measure campaign, and heavily to attorneys to fight us when we did a referendum on the, the University Orchard of Richard Park. I mean, they were heavily all united against us. So it, it was no longer about what's really, it, it became almost a little bit of a personal thing. You, you obviously are not, we're willing to work with you, we're willing to compromise, and they said, "No, we want you to completely remove this land and let us do what we, what we want to do, which is put a road through it." And we said, "No." So therefore, we kept it in Measure V. It wasn't placed there, in my view, simply because we were concerned people are hiking. Ninety-nine percent of all the people who hike in the hills go through Hold a Crook's Park. I mean, I go there all the time, and I don't see anybody on the other side. If you go to this land, you cannot even see Loma Linda from it, you just can't. So obviously, it wasn't important for them. I think the biggest issue for Measure V wasn't so much the hills, to be honest with you, but it was the rest of the town and how it would be developed. Traffic mitigations, how, what type of housing could be put on it, and we knew that those limitations would have ultimate impact in how much can be developed. And it, it's obviously working, because now the projects that we just approved on, on Mission Road are significantly different to what was approved then. So personally, I don't think that it needs to be put in front of the voters. Now, as it relates to the conflict, I would agree that because of the fact that the university is brought up, I, I would, I would be more comfortable having to, you know, draw straws. You know, I don't mind, you know, expressing my view-- You know, I don't mind, you know, expressing my viewpoint that I am biased. If I know that something's going to benefit my biggest employer in town, yeah, I might actually vote to favor that. Then it becomes murky. Well, does it really benefit our potential students? You know, then you get into all sorts of nuances. Ultimately, I'm a huge, huge proponent of higher education. I think if we can do anything we can to help, whether University in Arizona or Loma Linda, you know, I think it's in our best interest to try to work on that. As we make a decision on this, I personally would be more comfortable if we drew straws than make a decision based on how that happens, so. But I cannot speak for everyone else, so if we drew straws, everybody else has to decide to do that. Otherwise, individually, they're just recuse themselves to the point where it's just Mr. Duper.
I'll go home sick.
So I can agree that I think the straws are the cleanest way to do it. Same from Councilman Leonard, yeah.
All right, if that's the
With the understanding that drawing the straws, the three that draw the long straws can still vote to put it before the citizens, too.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. That would not be for you tonight.
Exactly, I think that, it's going to be tough to put that and prevent the rest of the people from voting on that, because that's not involving any of the university. That's just involving taking a piece of land and taking it, you know, putting it up for voter of the people.
That's a good point.
Fair point. Summarize that again, I wasn't able to catch it.
If you vote to put it before the people, it takes it out of our hands, and then there's no conflict.
And that's primarily my point, is to protect everybody here.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's no conflict, because by voting no not to put it before the people, you could theoretically be trying to influence it by your vote as to whether to do the, to do it or not.
All right. Arguments can be made, yes. So if that's the consensus, then I'll go ahead. I have my standard four straws, two of which are marked vote, and those would be the two of the four who will participate with Councilman Duper.
I don't remember which end I started at last time.
Okay, John.
Is there anything wrong with drawing straws and then doing some other items and then coming back to it?
You may do that.
Okay. Why don't we be nice? Yeah, but those go quick. You don't have a long agenda for those, right? Okay, then stand pat for while on item eleven.
I see we've lost our students, the potential recipients of the benefit of this.
They have a curfew.
I like your tie, by the way. I know ASU and I'm a Trojan, so we have similar colors, yeah. So I think you bought that at the Trojan bookstore, actually, but it fits for ASU, too. Okay, okay, well, that's a giveaway.
Okay, so item twelve, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month, I attended a meeting in Sacramento with the League of California City, and a couple of sessions that I went to had to do with CalPERS and OPEB, which is stand for Other Post-Employment Benefit Liborities. So I decided to pretty much copy that presentation and change it to City of Loma Linda and bring it back to all of you. What happened to? Okay, I think it's important for me to bring it back to the city council, because what happened with CalPERS is going to have a lot of impact to many cities that belong to California Public Employee Retirement System. Currently, most California pension plan are underfunded, typically between sixty to eighty percent funded, resolved in increasing pension contribution rate. The new government accounting standard board, which is also called GASP, sixty-eight required that the city have to disclose the net pension liability on financial statement effective fiscal year twenty fourteen and fifteen, fourteen, fifteen. And in December of twenty sixteen, CalPERS lowered the discount rate from seven and a half percent to seven percent within, within three years phase in. What that means is the rate of return, they used to put in a ten percent return on the investment, and now they're projected that it will go down from seven and a half to seven percent between these three years. So for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, the rate of return will be seven point three seven five percent. Fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty, to seven point two five. Fiscal year twenty, twenty to twenty twenty-one will be seven percent. Drop in discount rate or rate of return put the further pressure on the participating member agency budget to increase the contribution rate and lower funding ratio. What that means is the city had to put in more money into the system so that CalPERS can have money to give it back to retirees. Are you with me? Now, that is overall CalPERS pension system. So what does this have to do with the city of Loma Linda, okay? And this is number from CalPERS. So as of June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, the city of Loma Linda pension plan is funded as, the actual liability is about fifty-two point four million. Our assets is about forty point three million. That's mean that we have money set aside for our liability of forty point three percent. The unfunded, we subtract the two, the unfunded liability portion is about twelve point one million. So therefore, our funded ratio is about seventy-seven percent, which is compared to other cities, we are doing pretty good. Some other cities have a lot less than that. This current year of twenty seventeen, eighteen, our city contribution to CalPERS is about one point five million dollars. Okay? Now,
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I doubt that you can answer this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Are all of those numbers based on net present value? They are, okay. See, you answered it.
She did.
Good job.
I have a backup. So I don't take credit for any of this, because Diana helped me a lot, she did a lot of calculation. So what we did, we, Diana and I, and also with the state, CalPERS, they gave us equation on how to calculate this number. So what we did was, okay, from this fiscal year to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, so the next five years, what's going to happen to our PERS contribution, okay? For the miscellaneous, which is public works, finance, city clerk as a miscellaneous employee, our current contribution is about six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars this year. It's going to increase into one point three million dollars in five years. Okay? So that is increased. For public safety, which is our fire department, is going to increase from currently we pay eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to about one point five million dollars in five years. So we combined the two, right now we pay one point five. In five years, we're going to be paying two point nine million dollars, almost three. So therefore, we had to come up with additional one point four million dollars in the next five years to help pay for our obligation.
Per year?
Per years?
Yeah.
Yes. And this is cumulative, so that's mean that, oh, when we pay this, we're done. No, if the rate stay the same, we pay this every year.
Can you help us understand the background on this? Is this because CalPERS has been mismanaged at the state level?
Yes, let me do this. In the past, they've been calculated, they've been saying that, oh, our investment is so great that the rate of return is at twelve percent return on investment, which is, I don't know, they do pretty good. For me, if I could do seven percent, I consider seven percent is very good, if my investment can make that much money. In the past, they've been saying that they have twelve percent or higher rate of return. At one point, at one point, they have so much money that, oh, they superfund it. That's mean, city, you can provide benefit to employees, and it's not going to cause you any additional fund, because the return on the investment can cover all our liabilities. That's why a lot of city went to increase the benefit to the employees, like
Three percent of fifty.
Three percent of fifty, two point seven, fifty-five, and so it was like that. Until the crash, what, eight years ago? Eight years ago, then they realized, oh, we miscalculated, so therefore, city, now you are liable for this liabilities.
And our additional liability is based on the state numbers or on the city numbers?
Our additional liability is based on the fact that they have been undercharging us all along compared to what they were making on our money. We put our money in, they invest it, they make money on it, and they said, we're going to make this, they didn't make it. And as a result, we underfunded our retirement plans.
We invested in a train that goes from
Yeah, yeah. So
So I understand.
So what we're doing is we're having to pay the deficit.
Yeah, so our deficit, we're at seventy-seven percent of what we need. And you say we're in pretty good shape, so there are cities that are at forty, fifty, sixty percent. So they're, the amount they have to generate in addition to what they've been paying is much higher than what we do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's my question to them, my question to them, what if I cannot afford pay this, three million dollars? They said, currently, there's four cities that they deal with right now that don't have the money to pay for their contribution. What will happen is the retirees will not get the same benefit that they were expecting, they were expecting to get. So it's So that's why it's important for me to bring it to you, so.
The train to nowhere is too valuable to bail this out.
Again, like I mentioned at the, when we did the budget, next year, I think we can handle the increase, but in four years, I'm questioning that. And so therefore, we need to looking at, how can we cut the benefit or increase the revenue to help pay for these costs? Now, this is only CalPERS. Next is OPEB. Okay. What is OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefit Obligation, okay? So this is based on June of this year. We have active, that's mean, existing employee right now, the fire department, we cost us about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Miscellaneous, which is that a group is cost about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, total three forty, three forty-one thousand. The retirees is cost for the fire department is two fifty-three, the miscellaneous is two fifty-nine. So total is about half a million. The total OPEB liability is three point, I mean, well, right here, about eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
And I apologize, Char.
Yes, yes.
I'm not clear on the terminology here. What is post-employment benefits obligation?
It can be part of the health benefit that a city have to pay to the retirees.
That's not, so this is separate and apart from CalPERS?
Yes, sir. Is there anything else?
CalPERS is the pension portion, and this is the medical portion of the retirement. And so, and we did join in two thousand and ten, we did join a, what's the PERS basically trust for the OPEB, which is called SERP. So we have been setting money aside annually to fund this liability as well.
Yes. We have, she had been doing a great job at setting money aside in a trust in an amount of three, about three fifty thousand. So therefore, our liability is about half a million. Okay? So, so between that, right now, as of end of June, we're doing pretty good. Eighteen thousand, about eighteen thousand, about seventeen thousand dollars. And the reason for that, the reason that our, have a lot of impact on OPEB is because we only have, actually, we have twenty-two retirees, of which nineteen of them received this benefit. That's all.
What is that benefit?
It's the monthly, currently, it's a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month to contribute to the medical coverage for retirees.
So we're not committing to pay their entire medical bill, we're just, it's a fixed contribution?
Yes.
The state statutory amount. So annually, it will increase based upon a cost of living formula.
So other cities have, for example, guaranteed their retirees medical for life, which means they don't even have to tap into social security, or or they don't have to tap into Medicare or any of those other things. And that's an extremely large liability, and we never committed to that.
See, ours, that's why ours
How long doesn't a player have to work here to be vested in this plan?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years, does that include part-time as well as full-time, or?
I think it's full-time. Full-time years.
And does the hundred and twenty-eight dollars continue for life, or only until sixty-five?
It continues only while they are getting medical coverage through the PERS program.
Which is until age sixty-five?
Yes, then they go on social security and they get the supplement.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
PERS has the Medicare supplement, and this will contribute to the Medicare supplement. So they can go on Medicare, and then the hundred and twenty-eight dollars can contribute to a purchase of the supplement.
Sounds like it doesn't.
So then the liability is based on some assumed lifespan?
Yeah, it's based on an actuarial.
Yeah.
Yeah. And do they adjust the actuaries for the fact that these people live in the blue zone? Okay.
So as far as OPEB go, we're not backing off, okay? Our liability is about, right now, is about thirty-one thousand dollars a year that we're paying right now. So I want to give you an example, well, actually not example, actual number for Loma Linda. At the League of California City, they give an example, which is a lot worse case. And, but I want to bring this to your attention, so that in the next couple of years, we need to look at, how can we generate enough revenue to offset this cost and so forth? Now, this next item, item number thirteen on the agenda, is, what's our plan, okay? At the budget workshop and during the way the city council was approving the budget, the budget committee had given us some recommendation regarding what we plan to do with our reserve, okay? Currently, we have about five point one million dollar in general fund under sign. About one point two five million dollar for a sign, which is for a vehicle replacement program. And about five and a half million dollars for committed. Committed, that's mean, if you want to use this money, you need a majority of the council to vote on what we want to spend this money on.
Well, we've established that this is kind of our rainy day fund, so it's for emergency purposes only. It's for emergency purposes only. So council adopted a resolution that this would be for emergencies, and so in order to tap into these funds, council would also have to convene and adopt a resolution to use these funds.
Okay. So what the budget committee recommend is that we're going to take one million dollar from under sign, from this five point one into a sign, which is increased from one point two five to two point two five. And another one million dollar from this fund into committed, so from five and a half to be six and a half. That what the, the budget committee recommend for us to do. But, since that time, since two weeks ago, I came back and talked to Diana, you know what? Maybe instead of put this money into this two fund, why don't we set, create another li- item in the reserve? And the reason for that is because back a couple of years ago, the city council said, you know what? We have three months of general fund for operation will be adequate for, for this committed. And right now, we have about three point four months, okay? So, what I would like to recommend is we put two million dollar that they, that they suggest and create a new li- item to, so that we use this two million dollar into unfunded liability that this money can only go to, toward CalPERS or OPEB. And if they have a, uh, insurance money that we have unfunded liability, we can, we can spend that money, use this money for.
But then, as the projections change, posit- potentially positive, we would be restricted from moving that money?
Correct.
No, it wouldn't be restricted. The, the, when you put it into assigned, it's, it's a designation that we can change easily. When we commit it, it actually requires a resolution, so.
So, this would be just another assigned that we call it unfunded?
Correct, and that's, and that's the reason we're suggesting just putting it into assigned and not actually sending it to the trust fund. Because once we send it to the trust fund, we can't just call it back, correct.
So, by, by calling it unfunded liabilities, by funding it, is, does that make the title a lie?
No, that's mean, I, I, if I have to spend the money, I would like to spend it for, for CalPERS.
Oh, okay. So, so this is essentially an accounting maneuver?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is this an accounting maneuver that prevents you from having to make tough decisions in the future on general fund expenditures?
N- no, because I still have to do that.
Because my, well, let me just, this is reserves, okay?
Yes.
So, reserves are for reservation?
Yes.
Reserves are not for willy-nilly spend expenditure. So, my, my question is, when PERS drops the boom and says, you have to come up with extra money, is this just in case the budget can't handle it? Or is this to completely relieve you of the responsibility of handling it in the budget?
Just in case.
Okay, but, but that is, a- as you know, if you've got children, for example, and you tell them, here's, here's twenty dollars, don't spend it unless you absolutely have to, they always will.
Well, I'm gonna ask, come, come to ask the parents, which is-
Okay.
You and my parents.
Okay.
And, and, and he said, I've gave it to me, if I don't spend it, I'm saying, sir-
He's gonna give it to Jerry.
Can, can, can I spend this money?
We need to watch you like a hawk to make sure you don't divert this reserve into the line item as part of the income for the general, general fund expenditures in the future, right?
Right.
We'll be very-
Well, the thing is, that's why I had to come and ask, come back and ask you. That, that's the whole idea, is, is, if I, if I leave it, if I leave it at, yeah, I can't go back.
If all this, if all this is, is, is a preemptive accounting maneuver, I don't have any objection.
And, and the bottom line, the bottom line is, you see, you're gonna have ten, eleven, almost twelve million dollars. That's all, you see, you have a twelve million dollar reserve.
It's never enough.
Pardon me?
It's never enough.
Yes, and, and twelve million from, from the general fund expenditures of seventeen is, is pretty good reserve.
It's very good.
Yes.
But it could be better.
So, so, uh, for the item number thirteen is, is, I, I request that you authorize we remove the money from unassigned for two million dollar from unassigned to another li- item for general fund, uh, unfunded liability.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Are we voting on thirteen?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Twelve was just information.
This is twelve and thirteen.
Okay, so-
But this is, this, the item we're moving is item thirteen.
So, you, someone first made a-
There was a motion and a second.
I'll just have a general comment. Diane and I attended a conference on decision two thousand and nine. Anticipating, if you recall, they were concerned back then that we would not have enough money for pensions. We're fortunate enough that we do. Now, having said that, I do not trust Sacramento. I think they're a bunch of communists who'd have no idea what they're doing. So, they're gonna change these numbers around all the time. They have forced over sixty cities to fight them in court by denying them their payment obligations for pensions. So, it's, they're running amok up there. I, I, and there's courts that have started making decisions that if a city cannot fund its pension obligations, it is not, they have the right to remove those pensions.
Remember who appointed some of those judges?
Yeah, well, no, no, but actually, the point I'm trying to make is that it's possible that in five years, we may be in a position where we have no money left, and guess what? The people whose pensions we're trying to fund are not gonna get one. And, and those unions are going nuts right now because they cannot guarantee their folks the pensions. And I think it's a wake-up call because the way this state is going, they are gonna run out of money. They are. And we're fortunate enough to have enough funds to fund it, but if this keeps going, I think we're gonna run into a much bigger issue. I mean, two thousand and nine was eight years ago. I mean, eight years from now, it could be a lot worse. Right now, CalPERS is extremely, extremely lucky that the stock market has moved up tremendously in the last eight years. But if we have another recession, there's no way they're gonna get seven percent. There's just no way. So, uh, we're, we're skating on thin ice, and we just hope and pray that everything keeps moving in a good position. But the problem is Sacramento, they, and the reason they're, they took money away from some of these cities for pensions is simply because they cannot fund their own budget. So, in our case, at the IVDA, they approved five and a half million dollars every year, and then suddenly they stopped approving it. Well, a judge ruled in our favor, but they know eventually they are gonna lose the case, but buys them enough time to have enough money for the next budget. So, they have enough receipts coming in, so they don't show a deficit, but that just can't keep going. And the problem is that they have so much control and they're spending like drunken sailors. They have no concept of the impact it's gonna have on the communities. They took away RDAs thinking they would have money, they would have more money for education. Dusty and I just met with a school superintendent from Redlands. They would love to build a school. And they, they're kind of gently asking us to help them build a school because they cannot get funding from Sacramento. And yet, the state tells us that they're removing RDAs because they want to provide more funding for schools, and it's just an outright lie. The schools are getting less money than ever, and yet, the receipts are coming in at record territories. They are spending it on lots of other projects.
If you've never listened to any of our state legislature, legislators, they will tell you that all of these bills do not have anything binding behind them. And every, they'll, to honestly ask, ask any one of them, that every one of these things that we vote on as the public, they turn it on and fun, funnel that money somewhere else. That's the way business is done up there, so.
I know, it's sad, so anyway, I'm just concerned.
Before we get, before we get to-
We're talking bad about his people.
Before we digress into state politics, I mean, we could digress into national politics and, and we'll be here all night.
Well, I was gonna say that too, but-
Let's go ahead and deal with this.
That's not on the agenda.
This is my fear, is that when they see our reserve climb to a, to a high-dollar amount, that they take that too, just like they did with RDA. So, we have to be careful, and I, I mean, I'm not saying we hide money, but-
Can I spend it?
No, you can't spend it, but, but I'm, I'm seriously worried about that because there are money, there are cities that do.
I have a question for you, and this is, this is serious, it's not just a jab, but it could be perceived that way. Do you think the voters who put those people in Sacramento were engaged and knew what they were talking about?
So, okay, so now we're back to national politics. Let's, let's take the issue at hand and-
I take exception to that. I think the Loma Linda voters are highly educated.
Only Loma Linda.
And more connected.
Only Loma Linda. I, I can agree with that.
Issue at hand?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. I heard no noes. It's passed unanimously. Uh, next, we have reports of councilmen, reports of officers.
Quick update, uh, we do have a airshow on October twenty-first and twenty-second at the airport. So, in fact, we need to put some posters here at their city. You don't have any here, do you? We need to put some up for the general public. Okay, thank you.
Good idea. And, uh, this last Sunday, we had a successful event, I understand?
Yes, sir, we have an electronic waste pickup, um, at a city hall here, uh, from nine to one. And I think we have two and, I can't remember the number, I think it's two and forty people bring out, uh, the electronic waste.
Yeah, and I came, came by, uh, just as it was closing and talked with the, the people who are picking this up, and said, this was incredible, so. And then, uh, a- as your representative on the OmniTrans board, uh, I know that, uh, our mayor is working with SBCTA, and I'm working with OmniTrans, and we're making headway on Redlands Light Rail. That's, I think, is an exciting proposition, so.
And I will have you note that the Redlands Light Rail currently estimates, as was stated at our last meeting, three thousand daily riders. Just imagine that. Three thousand people taking a full-size train from Redlands to San Bernardino.
Will they have to get off the high-speed bus?
And then back.
No, that's, that's probably one-way, three thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, then they have to return.
They previously estimated seven hundred. I'm trying to figure out where the other twenty-three hundred people came from, but-
It's an exciting proposition nonetheless.
So, is that it for reports of
Yes.
Officers and members? Okay, the city council is not adjourned because we have not finished, but we will move to the housing authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on housing items not on the agenda? No comment. So, we have our consent calendar.
Move it.
Motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved unanimously. We have new business, item three, consideration of requests from purchaser Ricardo Rodriguez for modification of terms of sale.
Good evening. Real quickly, the purchaser is not here this evening. However, um, this is the property at Poplar and Redlands Boulevard, the, he owns the commercial corner. It's a property right behind the housing authority sold to him. One of the, the conditions of that sale is that the, he merged the two lots, the corner lot, the one behind it, and go through the process to create all of that into a commercial zone. The lot he purchased is currently zoned as an R-two zone, sorry, R-three zone. Typically, those things, they have a cost for processing, lot mergers and zone changes, that's cost of doing business. In addition to that, to develop that lot to usable configuration, there will be right-of-way dedications, um, to widen Poplar, um, curtain grider sidewalk, there'd be some configuration, some movement possibly on Redlands Boulevard as well. In every other project in the city, um, the developer, which this gentleman is, um, bears the cost of their planning fees, all the, the fees associated with any development, as well as right-of-way and, and, uh, street improvements related to that. An argument could be made also that Measure V requires that the developers do, uh, encompass that as part of their project to man, to manage traffic mitigations, uh, related to their project. With that, um, staff recommends denial of the, uh, the request and that the conditions of the sale remain the same.
Does it require an affirmative vote to deny or just a non-action? On a request?
He is requesting action from the council, so it would require some, well, as an appealing body.
Acceptance would require a, a formal action, but, uh, um, so if there's a-
A non-action?
A, a non-action.
That constitutes a denial.
Approve.
Yeah. Well, upon what, I, perhaps I didn't understand, what basis does he have for requesting that, uh, we waive fees?
He doesn't want to pay him.
Poverty.
I, I mean, he's not here to argue his case, but, um, I, he's not, he's not a sophisticated developer. He's bought a piece, a couple of pieces of property, he wants to assemble them, and personally, I don't think he understood what he was getting into when he started dealing with assembling properties and zoning changes.
Rather not be passive. I would vote we deny his request.
Okay, that's a motion.
I'll, I'll second that, just a general comment. This is a property negotiation. Why would this item not be in closed session?
Well, the item was already approved as a sale.
Correct, so- Okay.
It doesn't fit under the narrow definition of closed session items?
If it's a negotiated item on, on the, because it looks, sounds like we're changing the terms of the sale, so changing this might actually change-
The sale is already closed, has it not?
The sale is not closed, it is in escrow. However, the, the purchaser requested to be allowed to make, to state his case, um, which would move it out of closed session and-
Yeah.
It's not, it's not required to be in closed session, even if it is property negotiations.
Yeah. The closed, the, the reason for a closed session, would it not be to conceal from the counterparty the negotiations internally?
Yes, to give direction to the representative to go and negotiate.
Yeah, we don't need to conceal what we're about to do.
No.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. The, uh-
Thank you.
Request is denied. Uh, any chair member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none. We are adjourned on the housing authority. Now, we move to our successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Uh, the, any comments from the public on any non-agendized items, which includes the sum total of the universe absent the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
Okay, no comments from the public. The consent calendar has been moved. Is there support? There's support. Any further discussion? Any opposition? I hear none on either. The consent calendar is approved unanimously. Any reports of officers? Hearing none. The successor agency is adjourned. Now, we return to item number eleven, and we ask the conflicted members to exit stage left.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. May it be brief. May it be brief.
We'll wait outside and come back for the gavel to drop.
Yes.
Okay, don't drop the gavel till I'm back.
You're gonna wait. Now that their conflicted presence has exited, we can continue with item number eleven. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Or of staff? Okay.
A request for what?
One more request. It's not in my list. Are there, is anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay.
I had a, a legal question for the attorney. Assuming this moves forward, how does that? What, what is the legal ramifications if we then put it up for a vote later and the voters voted against it, for example?
Well, I think there will be opportunities down the road to, uh, consent to the formal de-annexation and annexation. Um, or your preliminary indication of interest, uh, that's being requested tonight could be revoked or rescinded.
So, in other words, there's a lot of things that can happen between, between now and then that may not even need a vote of voters?
Correct, and, and we don't know at this point what Colton's going to do next week, uh, and so, perhaps it might be, if you do take an action, that could be reviewed at the following meeting, uh, of the city, city council.
Can we attach an amendment to it saying that, I know it sounds kind of redundant, but we would only be in favor of this if they're in favor of it?
Well, as, that was my question in a different form. If we approve this letter, and Colton does not approve their letter, my understanding is- my understanding is Lafco would not move.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, so there's no need for that kind of.
Now, the letter before you is, is a draft, and you may insert into it any language you see fit to insert, or you may give direction to the city manager to express concerns about the use of the northerly portion of the, the hills that would not be de-annexed or, or moved from the sphere of influence, and you could address environmental concerns related to open space and kind of tie that into your tentative support, so that going forward, when the environmental review takes place and any, any final decisions come down the road, that those concerns can be taken into account. And of course, we'd also take other steps to make sure those concerns are addressed.
Now, my, my understanding is from Mr. Saunders' presentation that the only, the only plans that will be presented to Lafco prior to, if the, if the de-annexation and annexation occurs, the only plans that will be presented prior to that would be a zoning plan? I don't remember the terminology.
Pre-zoning.
A pre-zoning. A pre-zoning plan. So when Lafco considers the annexation, de-annexation, are they going to have access to anything beyond that? So for example, let's say they decided to build Trump Tower in the middle of it, and we don't like that because they can look down, they can see Loma Linda from the top floor.
What if they, and I'm just going along that line of thinking, what if they built a series of apartment complexes and all those people started accessing the hills from that particular area, and we started seeing the impacts from motorcycles or whatever?
Yeah, so what I, what I was.
How do we address?
What I was wondering is, is, are we going to have purview over the entire plan, or once it's gone, it's Colton's baby?
Well, we'll have input throughout the process, and even to the point where Colton approves final plans after annexation into Colton, we would still have the opportunity to comment upon any environmental review and address concerns.
And I understand that, but it's, but my understanding from his presentation is that the only thing that will be presented to Lafco prior to the final action will be a pre-annexa- a pre, pre-zoning plan, not a specific plan or a.
It's a requirement in order to bring an annexation forward that the city in question pre-zone the property. And a pre-zone, and it's likely to be in the form of a specific plan for this project because that's the nature of projects of this size is for Colton to require a specific plan. So we anticipate a specific plan coming forward, which would have tremendous details about the type of development and the land uses and the density and the transportation and the public services and all of the other types of things. Yeah, Lafco does not require that a track map be presented and approved in order to do an annexation, but they want the baseline documents of what's going in there, the type of products and density and so forth, understood by everyone, number one. Number two, they want a fiscal analysis to understand the fiscal impact on the, on the various jurisdictions, and they also require a lengthy environmental review process, and as your attorney alluded to, those would impose various conditions for the development. It may require certain types of improvements, certain type of mitigation measures, may prohibit certain things and so forth. And thus, the, in other words, it's, it's clear in the Lafco legislation that Lafco can condition an annexation to have certain elements and so forth and certain requirements. And I hope I've answered your question, but ultimately, the communities of Loma Linda and Colton and the surrounding area will have a significant understanding of what's being proposed and ultimately would be permitted in Colton if the annexation would go forward. It's not a blank check by any means. It's clearly understood what's permitted and would not be permitted as part of the annexed property when it comes to Colton.
Couple of questions.
Real quick on the pre-zoning? If I recall from the annexations we just did, there is a requirement that the pre-zonings stay in effect for a period of time. And I don't recall if it's three or five years. So it comes in as a pre-zone, has to stay at that zoning for a period of time.
Mr. Bulowicz is absolutely correct. When we met with the director of Lafco, she indicated to us that whatever the city adopted Colton as the pre-zone would have to stay in effect for a certain period of time and could not, in other words, it could not be brought into Colton. Now it's in Colton, and now Colton can change the rules. There's a certain limit on that for, for a certain period of time, and he's absolutely correct.
So if I understood correctly, Lafco's going to analyze the financial impact this, the, this annexation will have on their city, on Colton City?
And, and ultimately on Loma Linda as well, because there's going to be some impact on Loma Linda from this as well.
So in order to do that, would you not have some idea what's going to go over there?
That's absolutely right.
So that's the pre-zoning, which kind of gives you a, kind of a broad roadmap of what type of housing?
That's right. What types of housing, density, number of units and so forth. You need to have that to do the economic analysis.
So, I, I had just a couple of quick follow-ups. Right now, as it stands, what would you say is your best estimate as to how many homes you could put on there?
We do not know.
No, right, if, let's say it doesn't go to Colton, it stays in Loma Linda, and you comply with Measure V, how many homes could you put on there?
We could put one unit per ten acres, I understand, under the current Measure V.
So that means that, I'm sorry? Well, there's four hundred, well.
Well, if you count the whole problem. That's right.
Four hundred and thirty-seven acres.
So four thirty-seven, so we could have forty-three.
But I, I think there's, the reason I'm asking is I want to get a better understanding of how well you understand Measure V, because Measure V does allow for some density bonuses and clustering, which does allow you to put more units. But the, the point I'm trying to make is that if you did comply with Measure V, and you went ahead and build the homes that are allowed under Measure V, I'm just curious as to how, if you cannot connect the city services in Loma Linda, how would you go about connecting it? That was my question.
It, it, and it's hard to say how you would, how you would develop that property. We believe that Measure V would make it very difficult, certainly on the property that's on the south side, the two-hundred-and-ten acres, because you're separated by these ridge lines. It's very difficult to get facilities through the mountains and so forth. A lot of times, it's a function of how many units you're going to get, and it becomes a matter of economics. In other words, it may not make sense for twenty or thirty units to, to do that type of, of connection. So a lot of times, projects may be theoretically feasible, but not economically feasible.
So another, so the only way you could make it economic and comply with Measure V is to connect all your services to Colton?
Perhaps, who knows? Yeah. Other questions?
I was just, just going to say, I'm not a developer, obviously, but I do know that there is a shortage and a demand for homes in this city, and people will overspend and drop cash offers like there's no tomorrow to live in the city of Loma Linda. I can't say that's the same for the city of Colton, but I, I don't know a hundred percent. And it's just, it's just kind of a, kind of a shame that we don't, because I honestly think we could support very high-end homes. Beautiful, nice homes with acreage. There are a lot of people, probably a lot of folks that have left Loma Linda for places like Beaumont and Ucaipa and places where they could have property and large homes that would probably come back here. And, and, and knowing what I, what I do know about the real estate market here is we could sustain those type of homes and that type of development. And it's just too bad we don't see more of an interest, because I think we all would love to see more higher-end properties and homes developed in this city.
It's interesting, the point you make is that obviously houses sell for more in Loma Linda because people have a bigger desire to live in Loma Linda than Colton.
It's somewhat tied to the name, and not, not that.
Yeah, no, there's not that bad.
Magical boundary means anything, but, you know, blue zone versus.
Yeah, well, we, but, well, we can see that because there's an animal hospital on Waterman in San Bernardino that's called Loma Linda Animal Hospital. There's a, there are people who live north of the freeway in North Loma Linda, historically Loma Linda, that's currently San Bernardino, and they're all proud to have nine-two-three-five-four zip code. So you're right. Loma Linda has some value.
At the same time, I think the, the value that we hold, and it's important for our residents, is one that I think could benefit other cities. We agree that Colton does not have the opportunity to build the houses that we even want in our own cities. So this is, I, I think that's one of the, I see one of the biggest benefits is if, if we could figure out a way to help Colton increase its, its reputation and its market for real estate, it, it benefits us because if the cities around us thrive, it's a good thing for us. Their city has been struggling, and they're struggling significantly financially. So I think that if we can figure out a way to help them, and this may be one of those ways, I, I see that as a big benefit.
Any other questions? I do want to piggyback on something your attorney said, and that is, there's a number of, of occasions and circumstances in the process in which the city of Loma Linda can assert its will as to what it thinks is appropriate for this potential project and for this potential issue. And what we're asking for you is not to address those issues tonight, but to simply open the door for a public discussion about these issues, public input and review in an, in an appropriate forum as this process moves on. We're not asking you to make decisions of what happens ultimately with this property. We're simply asking you to raise the door to public discussion about them.
So see, I, I unfortunately don't see it that way, because this isn't a letter that says we're inviting discussion on this project. It's a letter saying that we support changing the sphere of influence, which means we agree and support the project.
No, it is.
That's the way I see it.
Are you saying?
So if this was a letter that said, hey, we support exploring this and the possibilities down the road, I would view it differently. But that's not what the letter says. The letter says, the city council, we support this, this change, which means we support the whole process. There's no way to get around that. There really isn't.
Because, but let me, let me point to you how, how, how the proper way to look at this, okay?
You're going to tell me the proper word?
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking for, I'm suggesting alternative interpretation for you, okay? And that is, we did not ask for support for an, an annexation. We did not ask for support for a project. We did not ask for support for development. All we asked from this council is that the council support a willingness to have Lafco review and support the Sphere of Influence Amendment. So you have to ask yourself, what is the Sphere of Influence Amendment? That this area is, as defined in Lafco's rule, an area for potential annexation to Colton. It is not an annexation to Colton. It's not approval of a project or any sort of density. It's simply an issue of whether or not this is appropriate for to be deemed an area for potential annexation to, to Colton. That's what we've asked for, and we made it clear in, in the communication tonight to the council that ultimately, your council and your community and your citizens are going to have input and ability to persuade the process as those issues come up. But we didn't ask for annexation approval. We didn't ask for a project approval. We simply asked for you to look at the issue of the Sphere of Influence Amendment. And Lafco says to us, if you need the support of the Loma Linda Council and you need the support of the Colton Council for that body to review the Sphere of Influence Amendment, and that's what we're asking for tonight.
So are you saying that an actual annexation agreement will come back before us again?
No, well, it's going to come, here's what happens. If it, the Sphere of Influence Amendment is approved, requested and supported by Loma Linda, and the same occurs at Colton, it's going to go to Lafco, and this applicant, and, and they make a decision as to whether or not this.
We have a decision-making building.
May I answer the question? They make a decision as, they make a decision as to whether or not to approve the Sphere of Influence Amendment. That Sphere of Influence Amendment does not change your city jurisdiction one bit. It simply says that this is an area for potential annexation to the city of Colton. That's all it means, okay? And so ultimately, this applicant has the right to make an application for an annexation. The decision on the annexation is, is, is made by Lafco, and, and that's the way annexations are handled.
Again, I'm not trying to debate you here, but you're, you're, you're not making sense. Because what you're saying is this does not change any of the annexation. But you are admitting that this is us asking Lafco, hey, if you get approval from Colton, you can then vote on the annexation.
No, no, that's not true. The issue is whether or not Lafco can proceed with the Sphere of Influence Amendment. If the Sphere of Influence Amendment was approved, and the annexation was presented to Lafco after an application in this applicant, I am confident, and you're free to confirm this with Lafco, if the city of Loma Linda went to that Lafco hearing on the annexation and stood up and said, we do not support this annexation, I am confident that Lafco would deny the annexation.
Okay, but what you're saying is it does not come back to us for a decision.
There are no further hearings in, in Loma Linda on the annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, just to make sure I'm clear, a decision about de-annexing a piece of property, I understand it's made by Lafco, but what role does the owner have in that process?
In what role does the owner have in the annexation?
If the, for example, in this case, there's only one owner.
That's right.
Let's say there were ten thousand owners. Would then they, as a group, decide whether they want to be annexed or not?
Well, you're, you're asking a good question. Let me answer it this way. Lafco approves an annexation. Let's assume that that happens. There is a protest hearing procedure at Lafco in which Lafco holds a hearing to determine if there is a level of protest that's involved, okay?
By the landowners?
By the landowners, and, and, but there's a determination, it's very complicated, as to whether the landowners, the area is inhabited or uninhabited, okay? And if it's uninhabited, the landowners have the right to a protest. If it's inhabited, they also have the right to a protest as well. The initial question is whether the protest is sufficient to trigger an election of the people that are affected. But none of this is triggered when you have a single owner.
Okay, so the, the, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that a vote for annexation or de-annexation ultimately is being made by the people who live there, for all intents and purposes. If they choose to have a say in it, they get to vote and overrule either one of the cities or Lafco?
If there are sufficient voters in, who reside in the area to, to have the election, and they, they vote in a sufficient number. That process is simply not triggered here because we have a single landowner.
But just in general. But if it were, let's say that Lafco wanted to add Scotch Lane to the, to the deal or wanted to handle it separately. What is the vote requirement to, to ratify a, a, a change in city boundaries? Is it fifty-one percent or two-thirds or three-quarters? Fifty plus one?
Well, first of all, Lafco has to make a determination as to whether the area is inhabited or uninhabited. If it's, it's uninhabited if there's less than twelve registered voters residing in the area. It is inhabited if there are more than twelve registered voters in the area, okay? And then there's a, a protest procedure, and I'm reading off the Lafco flowchart here. There's a procedure to determine what protest number is required to trigger the election requirements. And if it's inhabited, less than twenty-five percent of the registered voters file written protest, then it's not deemed to be a successful protest. If more than, it's a successful protest.
In your particular case, there are not twelve registered voters because people don't live on the property.
That's right.
So the whole entire decision would be made by Lafco. So when you talk about the protest proceeding, if we would have to physically choose to drive over to Lafco, wherever they're holding the hearing, and verbally protest at that point, it would, it would not come back to us for any further discussion or, or decision. So I, I'll just stop this now. I'm not in favor of this for the many reasons I talked about earlier, because I believe it is, it is possibly circumventing the law, and I don't want to be part of that. So if we came up with another solution to present it to the people or another way to legally make this happen, in my mind, I, I may support it. legally make this happen, in my mind, I, I may support it. But at this point, I don't, so...
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, any further, further questions of the applicant or of the city staff?
Does this require a vote or consensus?
The, my understanding is it requires a vote. Or I'm conducting it as though it requires a vote.
Well, I'll go ahead and move, move forward with the letter. I wish I can persuade Council Duper to change his mind, and with that, I, I mean, I have six different reasons that I think this might be a good, good thing for us, and, I mean, I can state them now or...
Feel free.
Whenever we have the second. I mean, I know there's a lot of discussion...
I will, I will second the motion, feel free to make your comments.
I know there's a lot of discussion, Measure V's restrictions, and perhaps if this may be a way to circumvent them, and that, that is a very legitimate concern, especially if you're concerned, if you're concerned about what prevents other landowners from doing the same thing in other parts of the city, and that is a very, very legitimate concern. I think this is a special case, I mean, there's no doubt about it. And I think there's a, the reason it's a special case is because it, it still protects what Measure V wanted to do, which is prevent large, high-density homes in the hills, the north-facing slopes. We didn't want our hills to look like Laguna Hills and other places where all you see is no more greenery, but just house on top of house, things like that. And the biggest issue for us was roads, because we believe that roads is another way of saying services. So once you put services back there, it opens up all sorts of other possibilities for other developments. So that was a big issue for us. And it, it allows, basically, it does not allow the houses that we didn't want in the hills. That's the bottom line. I understand that what Colton does may be less restrictive than Measure V has, but given the way Ritchie Canyon has been developed in the last few years, I very much doubt that anybody in Colton would approve something that's not high-end, like Crystal Ridge and other places that are, you know, lots are selling for $600,000 to $700,000. So that in itself is a positive thing. As I mentioned before, I really think this is something that benefits the city of Colton. The Colton needs help, and I think this is our way of trying to help them. If they have high-end housing, it increases their reputation, which kind of adds a transitional benefit to us. I agree, we, we do want more high housing, high resident, high, high-level housing here in Loma Linda, and the reason for that is because people are forced to move out of town. I know for a fact, the physician who bought a house on Mission Road sold his house, he works in Loma Linda, he moved to Corona. And he moved to Corona because he felt that the houses that we're building right now in California was too expensive, didn't give him enough space. So he was willing to pay a little bit more and live in Corona and commute every day. So I think, given what they've done on Crystal Ridge, if this project is similar to that, I think it would benefit all of our institutions, from the VA to the academy, the university, the medical center, to provide some housing so their employees come closer to home. Can we play a part of that? Absolutely, I think we can afford to build more of that housing in Loma Linda. There's, there's plenty of land in Loma Linda that we can build it, but it's up to us as the council to make sure that we, you know, force whoever puts houses in Loma Linda to abide by our standards. I think another reason, I'm, go ahead.
When you say that, that means, are we saying going forward, we're no longer going to de-annex stuff so other people can avoid Measure V rules?
No, I, I think every single project is going to be voted on its own merit. I, I cannot say that this is the one and only one. I can't in good conscience. But, but here's why I think there's an exception. You have to remember, back then, I know you weren't there, but when we had a discussion with, with the landlord at the time, he was a developer that was subsidizing the campaigns of council members in Loma Linda whose only interest was to build high-density housing. That was a huge, huge issue for us, okay? So, in that sense, I think when you look at a project, you say, who's a developer and who benefits? They're telling us that the beneficiary of this is Arizona State. That in itself, I think, is a huge factor. It's not a developer whose interest is to get himself involved in politics. I like the fact that they're not. Loma Linda, yes. And do you have a problem with the fact that Loma Linda benefits?
No, but I have a problem that the four of you who work for the council can have been very pro and very pushing this deal for a while.
No, we haven't been pushing this deal. I don't, I'm not sure what, what you're getting at. I, I, and I think that, I think the issue is here...
Do you, do you believe that our conflict is still operative?
So, in other words, you're, you're bothered by the fact that we have...
And why does that bother you?
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Does it bother you?
That we like, favor Loma Linda University. What's wrong with that?
The laws of the state of California that allow for the drawing of straws and the rule of necessity expunges that legal, that legal responsibility.
Are you sure about that? I just would be very, very careful in what you're saying right now. I just really would. In fact, I would advise you as your friend not to really talk about this.
The, the fact that we support Loma Linda University and this project supports them, why is that a problem?
Because it's not about the voters and the people who live here, it's about our institution that you work for.
Okay, and that's fine. So, so your, your conflict is the fact that we work for them. If we didn't work for them and we still liked them, they would be okay?
Well, I don't know, I might have to think about it differently.
Well, yeah, it benefits me...
Not me to think about the project.
Yeah, I understand, I, I understand that.
That's all.
Because to, to me, it's, it's, it's almost like, regardless, I almost wish that I had no conflict so I can, you know, I, the university provides education, jobs, healthcare, there's 15,000 employees who come, not all of them live in Loma Linda, I mean, work in Loma Linda, but they're part of the larger institution, who spend money in the city. So I cannot envision why we as a city would not welcome anything that would benefit them. I, and that's a part I don't understand. So, I, I think the fact that it benefits them is actually a good thing because they happen to be our largest employer. If you have a problem with them, that's a different issue, but I'm not sure where the problem is.
No, I just want to make sure that you are cat do the interest of the residents and the people and businesses that live here.
Absolutely, and my biggest constituent is Loma Linda University. They're my biggest employer. The same reason South Carolina gives billions of dollars to Boeing to bring jobs, and Indiana and Wisconsin, I, the city of Loma Linda, do what I can to help my biggest employer. Do I want 15,000 employees? Do I want them to start lowering the salaries of their employees because we're making them pay more? Do I want them to not provide better healthcare because we're making them pay for other services? We want to do everything we possibly can to help an institution that benefits our constituents. The, I, I, and I don't want to persuade you of this, but I got to tell you, I've walked the streets five times in the cities, and the first time I went, I, I ran for a council, they said, the reason you lost because you failed to point out how anti-university the other council members were. That was the bottom line. There's people who moved to this city, buy houses in the city because Loma Linda University and Medical Center is here. I'm not sure why that's hard to understand. Yes, there's people who don't like them and they, they control everything, but the bottom line is that these are people who spend money in our city, provide us with jobs, so I, I just cannot see how, it, it just doesn't fathom any type of logic that somehow the university benefiting is bad for the residents. And somehow, if the university gets involved in something, the residents hurt. I, I have no problem expressing my love for the biggest institution in town. I know you have a problem with that, and I still don't understand why you have a problem with Loma Linda University.
No, I'm being careful.
Why? Why do you have a problem with Loma Linda University?
Because what you're saying is you would trump a decision for them over all the other residents and people in the city.
If the residents of Loma Linda say, Loma Linda University, we don't like you, yes.
That's an extreme exaggeration.
We represent the constituents, which include businesses and residents.
We represent the voters.
Yes.
The voters, because Loma Linda University, although a big institution, is a nonprofit institution that lives in our city, they're not the voters.
Do you believe that it is possible?
Now, hold on a minute, before you twist this, I love the university and I'm a big supporter of the university.
Do you believe it's possible to support the people and the university simultaneously on any given issue?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I'm just not...
Would it be, would it be unethical to do so?
No, but it depends on if you favor one or the other, that's the problem.
Okay, that's a more reasonable position than what you were saying before.
No, that's, that's always been the position.
No, but you were, you were presenting it as though it were unethical.
Basically just, well, again, I don't want to address this, but you basically said you'd choose the project with the university over anything else because they are your biggest supporter.
No.
You've just said that it's reworded.
In fact, you may want to put your mic on.
I didn't hear that.
No, no, no. I said, in favor of the city and the constituents, if it benefits the biggest employer, yes, I'm willing. And I think one of the biggest issues I had...
I just think we ought to, you just ought to do the vote, because I, I really don't want you to get into trouble.
I, I don't think I'm getting in trouble by stating that I support the university. I'm not sure why that, you see that as an issue. It just, it, it, it's beyond, anyway. Well, once again, I think this project benefits nonprofit developers who's not in the business of camp, funding campaigns for other people. I, I think that it also, it, it's a project that clearly, one way or another, whether it's 40 homes or whatever, it's going to be needed services by the other city. So I think it makes sense for us to put it there. That's one of the biggest issues that I, one of the biggest reasons I think this is a very unique project. I think it'd be harder for other landowners to try to de-annex their land. This is a very unique situation where the only way they can develop is to connect to another city. And I, I like the fact that, unlike other projects, I felt like this landowner was very transparent. He told us very clearly what his intentions are and what, and the reasons for it. They, they, they could have said, they could have not mentioned Arizona State, they could not have mentioned the fact that they talked to Colton, they could have mentioned the fact that they doesn't have the university. They were very transparent and very open at the very beginning. If the university didn't benefit, I would still support this project for all the other stated reasons.
As I stated previously, I believe that this entire region of Loma Linda is a bit of, of a liability to the city of Loma Linda, because it's not something that we can provide any service to. There are people in, for example, in Scotch Lane area who complain frequently that there are motorcycles and other motor, motorized vehicles that are tearing up the, the trails in their area, and they're upset about it and want us to do something about it. It's very difficult for us to do that because it's in an area that's, that's very difficult for us to access. If the citizens in Scotch Lane chose to become part of Colton, I would also support de-annexation and allowing Colton to take over that area. I do not believe it's an area that naturally should have ever been part of Loma Linda by geographic standards, the fact it was arbitrarily there. I think this is an opportunity for us to rectify that. I think that it measures, it, this kind of a, a de-annexation honors the intent of Measure V by preserving the ridge lines, by discouraging building in the areas of Loma Linda that people frequent for hiking, which I believe is predominantly northeast of the San Jacinto Fault Line and the high ridge that that encompasses. I believe it preserves the lack of road access to Ritchie Canyon, which will help keep the traffic from being overwhelming on the streets of Loma Linda through residential areas. I think I agree with Councilman Popescu that this would help Colton, help them improve their housing stock, adds to the regional housing stock without impacting Loma Linda traffic. And I also agree that, were this to have no benefit whatsoever to Loma Linda University, I would support it. The fact that it has benefit to Loma Linda University, I see as a positive, not as some kind of ethical breach. I think it's unusual for a developer to have so much charitable impulse as to dedicate an entire piece of land to educational purposes. I've dedicated my entire career to support of education, and I think that's a noble impulse. I think it is a wonderful thing to see. When this project was owned, when this property was owned by Mr. Hansberger, I also was inclined to support it, and I believe that was before Measure V passed. And that was because I did my homework, like I said earlier, and I asked the people who were, who were extremely interested in preserving the hills. And the, the degree of interest in preserving the hills, my assessment was that it was the land northeast of the San Jacinto Fault, and it was the portion that was not included in this, in this property. I asked specifically the people who were most passionate about it, and they said, that's not the part we care about. All we care about is not connecting the roads, so that the Ritchie Canyon traffic would end up in our residential streets. So, my assessment is that the people who were most interested in preserving the hills saw this as not being a threat to be developed, even when it was to be developed by someone who did not have a charitable impulse and was doing it particularly for private and personal gain. And based on that, I support this move. And I have no qualms about it, I have no reservations based on any ethical issues. I believe that in, under the laws of the state of California, that my, my personal conflict has been expunged by the, by the drawing of straws, and therefore I can proceed with my participation in this vote. And I seconded the motion, and I invite any further comments from other members of the council before we have the vote. Mr. Duper thinks I said too much. Thank you for that. Thank you for being concerned. I appreciate it. No more? Okay, then we'll have, we'll go to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, two votes to one. The motion is passed. And I believe at that point, we are adjourned.